Wonderful crowd, it's great to see all the faces out here tonight. I'm Michael Beer, I'm Chair of the Schools Committee. We have a few Schools Committee people here, could you please stand up if you're in the audience? Alan, John Weistat served on it, Pat, great, thank you. And thank you School Board for coming tonight. It's a wonderful tradition that goes back a long way and where I can speak for everybody here, I'm sure, to say that we're all very grateful for your service. It's hard work, you don't do it for the money, and we really appreciate your dedication to the children. A special thank you to Sally Baird, for whom I think this may be her last time that she will be coming and sitting in this capacity anyway before us, and thank you for your many years of service. We have 55 minutes program, the School Board will present for about 20 minutes, and then we'll have about 15 minutes of some prepared, pre-prepared committee questions that have been provided to the School Board, and then we have about 20 minutes for delegates to ask questions from the floor. I think that's all I need to do, let's, Abby, you want to start it off?
Yes. Very good, thank you very much for including us on behalf of the School Board, we are happy to be here, and we're happy to be the warm-up act this evening. The main event, I understand, is starting in about an hour. So let's start off with the Arlington Public Schools' mission. Arlington Public Schools instills a love of learning in its students and prepares them to be responsible and productive global citizens. The APS vision: APS is a diverse and inclusive school community committed to academic excellence and integrity. We provide instruction in a caring, safe, healthy learning environment responsive to each student in collaboration with families and the community. And our core values: excellence, integrity, diversity, collaboration, accountability, and sustainability. We are guided by our strategic plan, and the five goals of our strategic plan are to provide a challenging and engaging education for our students, to eliminate achievement gaps, to offer high-quality staff, to recruit and retain high-quality staff, to provide optimal learning environments, and really what this is all about is meeting the needs of the whole child. So how are we doing in APS? Well, I'll touch on a few different measures tonight. One is the Washington Post Challenge Index, that ranks high schools across the country, and in the region, you can see the ranking for our schools, we did very well, and that's out of 178 schools, so we're very proud of that. Some other points: students meeting benchmarks in kindergarten. The K-Pals is the kindergarten, it's a reading assessment, and you can see very high levels of achievement for our students here, and that's in large part to the commitment and investment we've made in pre-K, because students are getting the foundation they need before they even arrive in kindergarten. In middle school, again, looking at a challenging and engaging education, we want as many students as possible to be completing Algebra I or Geometry in middle school, and also world languages, starting on world languages for high school credits, so you can see there how we're doing. Also, participation in International Baccalaureate and Advanced Placement courses is very important, a real emphasis for us, and also, we've performed very well, outperforming the nation and the state routinely on SAT and ACT scores. Graduation rates is something we have focused on very deliberately, and what we know is when we really focus on an area, we are able to achieve results. So right now, we are in a position where all of our high school seniors at our comprehensive high schools are on course to graduate this spring, and we've had no dropouts this year, which is really remarkable. Our overall graduation rate for all of our students last year was 91.3 percent, and if you look at just our three comprehensive high schools, it's 97.5 percent grad-on-time graduation rate, which is a big improvement and really remarkable. So here you can see the trends over the years since 2009, the increase in the overall graduation rate, and then cutting the dropout rate from 11.9 percent to 5.7 percent. Recruiting and retaining high-quality staff, again, another one of our strategic plan goals. You can see the percentage of our students who have advanced degrees, those who have multiple endorsements, which is really important. We have students with many needs, and to be able to have teachers who have an endorsement, for example, in ESOL, Hilt, and math, is a very powerful, very powerful qualifications for our students. Most of our new teachers have many years of experience, and then we also have 164 teachers who are nationally board-certified, and that is about twice the percentage of student, of teachers who have achieved that in the country, so we're very pleased to have such high-quality staff. And really, that's what makes the difference in student achievement, is having high-quality staff, and we are very fortunate in Arlington to have that. So another strategic plan goal, optimal learning environments, you can see here on the left photographs of Yorktown High School, which was completed this fall and received LEED Gold Certification, and on the right, Wakefield High School. If you haven't been to these two facilities, I really encourage you to go see them, they are just phenomenal. And also, we will be approving tomorrow, or Thursday night at our School Board meeting, the contract for the new elementary school on the campus of Williamsburg Middle School, so you can see some schematics there. Those bids came in within the project cost, so we're very pleased about that, and that school will open in the fall of 2015. The whole child, there's so much going on addressing the needs of the whole child, so I'm just going to touch on a few. This month is Arts in the School Month, and there are plays, and concerts, and exhibits all over, I really encourage you to go and see a production. There's an exhibit starting at the Central Library tomorrow evening with our student winners in the Scholastic Art Competition, so lots of opportunities to see the tremendous talent that our students have. We have four seniors this year who won the POSI Scholarship, that is a four-year free ride, complete college-paid, so that is outstanding accomplishment of our students. Lots of leadership opportunities for our students as well. We have a Latino youth conference in the fall, we have a student advisory board, we're meeting with them Thursday evening, in fact, a teen network board, and a whole host of extracurricular activities and electives. We have been going through an accreditation process, and the evaluators were here last week, and remarked on just the tremendous breadth and variety of options that we offer our students and that they take advantage of. Per pupil cost, this is something that we hear about often, and you can see the trends here, and yes, in fact, Arlington does have the highest per pupil cost in the area, and we have for quite some time. And largely, that is because of the quality staff that we have, and the fact, as I showed you, that we have staff who have multiple years of experience and multiple degrees, and that's an investment that we believe in, and we believe makes a difference in our students and their achievement. Also, class size, that's the other big driver. We are an organization of people, we have among the smallest class sizes, and again, that is part of our commitment to achievement for all of our students. And then there are other areas, for example, pre-K and other programs that we offer that some other jurisdictions don't have to the degree that we do. So how does that investment in APS, what is the return on that investment? So we had an economist, Michael Walden, do a study for us to look at that. There were a couple copies outside, and you can see the citation here, if you want to look at that on the APS website, it's quite a detailed report, but it does show the comparison of high school students in the United States and what their earning potential is, how it compares with students, high school graduates versus non-high school graduates in the country, and in Arlington, the earning potential for our graduates is 71 percent more than non-high school graduates, so a real benefit to the quality of education here in Arlington. And then we wanted to look at the effect on the local economy, and one measure of that is real estate taxes. I know we all recently got our assessments, and that the estimate from this economist is that the property tax revenue in Arlington is between $27 million and $47 million higher per year because of the quality of the schools. It increases the value of our homes and the commercial real estate as well. So for all the good things that are happening, of course, we also have challenges, and one of the things that I really appreciate about Arlington Public Schools is that we always want to do better, we are always working to improve. So here you can see the grade-three reading SOL scores and the trends, and you can see that there was a drop-off last year. There were some new standards that were introduced, so that was part of it, we have seen in the past when new SOL standards have been introduced, there's been a dip, and then there's an adjustment and the scores come back up, so we expect that to happen, but there are also significant gaps between our white students and other students, so this is an area we need to continue to focus on. Challenges in middle school, I talked about wanting our students to take Algebra I and Geometry to be really challenged and prepared for high school, so again, the trends generally are going up, but again, we have gaps, and so this is a real focus for Arlington Public Schools. And in high school, the Advanced Studies Diploma opens doors for students. There are some colleges and universities that will not accept a standard diploma, the Advanced Studies Diploma is more rigorous, we want all of our students to achieve that, and again, while there have been improvements in students achieving that diploma, we still have gaps, and we are still focusing on that. So another challenge, you've all heard, our enrollment is increasing, it continues to increase. I'm sure many of you have seen this chart many times, you can see our current enrollment, our enrollment projected for next year, 24,153, and by 2023, we will exceed 30,000 students by our current estimates, more students than we will have had in Arlington Public Schools in our history. So, cost of enrollment is one of the big challenges, so let's start to talk a little bit about the budget for next year. The estimated cost of the increased enrollment for next year is about $10 million. And let's talk about some of the other pressures that we are seeing in cost increases over the current-year budget. So first, we have the enrollment staffing, and the enrollment in terms of the relocatables, that's the nearly $10 million. The Virginia retirement system, our retirement for our staff, the increased cost of that for next year is about $7.5 million. Healthcare, the increased cost about $2.6 million, and then you can see energy and transportation. So the total increase over our current-year costs, just for the cost of doing business, is about $20.6 million. So, what is our budget gap in those terms? The county transfer at 45.6 percent of locally shared revenue would give us an increase of $19.6 million compared to those increased budget pressures, that leaves us a gap going into the budget process of about $1 million. That does not include any new initiatives, and it doesn't include any compensation increase. If we were to add a step, for example, which would be about $8 million, then that gap grows to about $9 million. So the School Board in December gave direction to the superintendent as he went through his budget process, and that included addressing our budget gap by looking at program efficiencies. We're always trying to do better, we had an efficiency study done years ago, and we're always trying to look to be more efficient, to use one-time funding from closeout, so our FY13 closeout, instead of spending that money when it became available, we put it in a reserve fund, carry it forward to the FY15 fiscal year to offset one-time costs and help us with that budget gap. And then the possibility of asking for additional revenue. We also wanted to be sure we're aligned with our strategic plan goals, and have a focus, again, on compensation because of the importance of teacher quality, and also looking at increasing instructional time at the elementary level, because some of our schools do not have the same instructional time as other schools. And then, of course, making sure that in the long term, our plan is going to be sustainable. This gives you an overview of the revenue sharing, recent revenue sharing history with the county, and you can see, back when we, we no longer have an official revenue sharing agreement, we have a practice. Back when we did have a revenue sharing agreement, that share was 46.1 percent, it's dropped slightly over the years, and the School Board has asked for some additional revenue over the county manager's proposal to get us back to the 46.1 percent, and that would generate about $4.8 million more than is in the county manager's proposed budget. So, leading up to the superintendent's presentation of his proposed budget, which happened last Thursday, we had a lot of community input, there was a joint county and schools budget forum, we had a number of our own budget forums, we had a budget tool, did anyone here do the budget tool online? Few people. So this is an interesting exercise where we put up a variety of options, and what's fun about it is you actually have to balance the budget, because it's easy to say, let's cut this, or let's add that, but when you go to press send, if you weren't within $1 million, you couldn't submit your information. So that was very helpful, we had a lot of responses, and so all of that went into the process of the superintendent developing his budget proposal. So here's an overview of what he's proposed. It's a $539.4 million budget that reflects a 3.1 percent increase over the current fiscal year, and here the highlights in terms of what he was focusing on, maintaining class size, I mentioned the importance of that, employee compensation, having an emphasis on reading, you saw the chart on reading, this has been a real focus for the School Board and APS this year, focusing on teacher and staff quality, enhancing technology, supporting our academic planning, more student supports, expanding that instructional time, as I mentioned, and strengthening school communications. This is an overview of our, the revenue picture, as you can see, more than 80 percent of the school's revenue comes from the county. I will note that federal revenue has been decreasing over time, so even though our needs in terms of special education and low-income students has been increasing, and the federal demands and requirements remain the same, and in some instances, increase, our funding is actually decreased in actual dollars. And this is how the funds are distributed, you can see that salaries and benefits account for more than 77 percent of the total budget, and if you just look at the operating budget, it's about 87 percent in salary and benefits. So we'll just give a quick overview of the, some of the detail of the superintendent's proposed budget in terms of savings, some savings at the central office, you can see. There are a couple of, well, a few, but these are the highlights of the instructional proposals that he has made, we are starting to hear a lot of information and feedback about these, so one involves Arlington Mill High School and the Langston High School Continuation Program, addressing those students and their needs in a different way, and also some changes in planning factors for special education. Here are some other proposals for reductions, so total reductions of $7.3 million and more than 75 positions. Now, the good thing is, because we are growing, and we are always hiring, that does not mean that anyone is going to lose their job. Under the superintendent's proposal, it would mean certain people would be doing different jobs, but they would still have jobs within APS. In terms of new investments, the superintendent is proposing a 2 percent cost-of-living increase, that would be $7 million, and focus, again, on reading, and so that is an additional investment. It's something called the Arlington Tiered System of Supports, which gets at reading, which gets at special education students, ESOL Hilt students. We've had a number of program evaluations and focus last year, and so this starts to implement many of the recommendations that we've seen in the past, additional investment in technology, transportation, professional development. So that adds to about $12.9 million and adds some additional positions. Here's the budget calendar, so as I said, we had the superintendent presented his budget last week, we went immediately into our first work session, we're here tonight, and then you can see the series of work sessions that we have coming up, we'll have a session with our employee groups, we have two public hearings, so lots of opportunity to get input, for folks to come and speak to us, send emails, come during our open office hours, and we don't adopt the budget until May 8th. So this is really just the beginning of the process, we have two months before we'll be adopting our budget. So I just want to shift for a moment and just touch on our capital improvement plan, because that's something else that we have been spending a lot of time on, to address our growing enrollment, and you can see here the seat shortages to the far right there, currently, in the sort of midterm, and then in the longer term. And our focus in building the new elementary school on the Williamsburg campus was because that was the area of most critical need, where the seat shortages were at the elementary level and geographically where they were. Now, as we look at it, we continue to have needs at the elementary level, but also at the middle and high school level, with a sense that the needs at the middle and high school level are also going to become critical, and that is our overarching sort of guidance, is we have limited resources, so we need to focus on the areas of most critical need first. We also have established criteria that we will use as proposals come to us, and we have not had proposals yet, and so the criteria in general terms are capacity planning, how does a proposal to build something or do something differently increase the seats that we need for our students? How does it align with our strategic plan? Because ultimately, what's most important is instruction of our students and success of our students. How feasible are the proposals that we'll be considering? And we want to align with the county's smart-growth principles, and so we're working closely with the county to make sure that we are doing that. So the staff is going through a series of meetings, so you can see, if you go online to our More Seats for More Students website, there's an extensive calendar of community meetings to get input, the feasibility studies that are being done to consider different options will be considered at a series of meetings throughout the county, and then those feasibility studies will come to the Board for us to start to use those criteria and evaluate those different proposals. Also, something else that we're doing this year to make sure that we're really reaching out to the community and getting the input that we want, we're all liaisons to all of the different schools in Arlington, but now for the first time, we've created liaisons to each of the civic associations. So hopefully, all of you either have or will soon be receiving an email or a letter from all the School Board members, just making that connection, offering to come to your civic association meetings, giving you some links to our website so you can find the budget, so that you can find the More Seats for More Students process, and we really want to make sure that we are getting your input, because we know, most folks in Arlington don't have children in the schools, so we want to go beyond just the relationships with the schools. So have, are there civic association presidents here who've received emails or letters so far? Good, okay, so we're looking forward to building on those relationships. All right, so that is a very quick overview of what's going on, so we look forward to your questions, thank you.
Thank you, Abby Raphael, so much for that presentation, trying to do a, talk about a half-billion-dollar budget and how to teach 23,000 kids with tremendous diversity of ages, is, you did a great job in 20 minutes. I'd like to formally introduce the members of the School Board before asking questions. The current chair is Abby Raphael, and I believe the vice-chair is James Lander, is that correct? Your vice-chair? And we have members Sally Baird, Noah Simon, and Emma Violen Sanchez. We will, I'll just start reading off some of the questions. These questions were given last week before the budget came out, so those of you who are burning to ask questions about the budget will have an opportunity after these questions. "Please justify the superintendent's plan to gradually end discrimination against 4,000 students living in various neighborhoods whose schools have early release Wednesdays rather than ending it this year. If you don't have the funding to end the instructional inequity, why aren't you considering alternative solutions such as reducing school times in the other 15 schools or eliminating teacher planning time?"
Still me. So it is the School Board's goal that all of our elementary schools will go to full-day Wednesdays and have the same instructional time, and that would give all of our elementary schools the opportunity to have foreign language for all of our students. It is a funding issue, and so the superintendent's proposed budget includes adding two new schools for next year, and his proposal is that we have a three-year rollout to then have all of our schools at the end of three years have that. In terms of instructional, or planning time for teachers, planning time for teachers is critical, it's not anything that we, first of all, could take away because it's required by state codes and the standards of accreditation, but also, this is the time when the teachers plan together, and they review how students are doing, we have what are called professional learning communities, so they look at grade level and across different disciplines, so it's really critical to our students' success. In terms of trying to shorten the day and provide more time, staff has really looked carefully at what the proper amount of time is for FLECS, for that foreign language instruction, also extending the school day allows a little bit more time for the core instructional areas, so to be able to focus on math and reading in areas where a particular school needs some more time, and so that just doesn't seem to be an option to shorten the day, it would just, it would be shortchanging the students. So we, I know, are very dedicated to having this rolled out, I'm sure there'll be a discussion about whether two is sufficient for this year, whether there's somehow we could find in the budget more, but I know we're all pleased, we directed the student, the superintendent to include something on expanding instructional time, so I know we're all pleased to see something in his budget on that.
"Pre-kindergarten populations are also increasing. Is APS seeking ways to expand pre-K while simultaneously addressing the kinder through 12 capacity needs? How does this expanding need square with the proposal to eliminate the longstanding subsidy for the children's school? And are you intending to turn Reed School back to an elementary school?"
We know we have an unmet need for pre-K instruction. In the 2013, we had 140 students on the waiting list for the preschool initiative, the Virginia Preschool Initiative. Arlington is recognized in the state by having, you know, excellent preschool education, and we do take advantage of this funding from the state. And we do have 16 schools that have VPI, we have 10 schools that have Montessori, and we have 20 schools that have pre-K special ed. The children's school, currently in the children's school or Reed, we do have a Montessori program, and we also have a pre-K special ed, and we have in the integration station also that the students are integrated in the children's school. The children's school will continue to operate, the change this year that the superintendent is proposing is that the children's school would pay $200,000, because currently, the children's school, many of our operational costs, such as custodians, telephones, and other things, the school system is the one currently responsible. You know, the children's school actually only pays its $1, I think, right?
Thirty.
Oh, $30 for rent. So we felt that it was important that some of the operational costs be paid by the children's school. I don't think it is to eliminate it. Regarding the Reed building, the Reed building is one of the buildings that is part of our capacity, we're looking at it, and we are going to be looking at different options, and so there's, at this time, no decision has been made about converting the Reed School to an elementary school, at this time. Thank you.
"Transportation question. In order to reduce costs, has APS considered eliminating school bus service for high schools and middle schools while alternatively subsidizing the use of mass transit and bicycling? How much do we spend for each elementary choice school on transportation?"
Great, thanks, thanks everyone for being here. Michael, special thanks to you as well. Michael puts in an awful lot of time, he is very brave to sit through our meetings, and gives us an awful lot of advice, which is very valued. Certainly during my time on the Board, we have not considered eliminating school bus services for middle and high school, and I think it's unlikely that that's something we would consider in the near future. The Board, and the superintendent, and the senior staff see buses as a valuable service, a way to get kids to in school, to school and back home efficiently and safely. And we talk about efficiently, that also means environmentally. We do have our eye on walking and biking, but I will say, and my colleagues I think would agree, it's a very difficult needle to move, to change people's behavior. We as policymakers can try to influence that with guidance, with policy, with direction, but really influencing family by family is very difficult, because it's hard doesn't mean that we should stop doing it, though, and we continue to do that. We have transportation as a part of just about everything we do, whether it's instruction, whether it's our new buildings, and whether it's budget. The superintendent's budget includes 10 new school buses to keep up with enrollment, as well as a number of new drivers. It also includes a coordinator for students with special needs. As that population's needs continue to increase, it's pretty clear that we need to have a coordinator for that. We also work very closely with the county on transportation, our bus routes, our safe walks to school, our walk zones, we have a multimodal transportation student safety committee that's recently submitted a report, and we look forward to having a public session about that to really consider. The second piece of the question was in terms of choice schools. In my year on the Board, I've realized that there are two things that Arlington parents value more than just about anything. One are small class sizes, and the other are choice schools. It's a unique part of Arlington, and we should be proud to have that. While we don't necessarily tally it out by school what transportation costs are, we do know that the average student lives 1.7 miles away from school. That would indicate that it's a little more difficult to walk to school or perhaps bike to school, certainly on a day like tomorrow, hopefully school will be open again. But I will say, just taking my own family as an example, our neighborhood school is actually further away than the choice school that my two kids lotteryed into, and that's allowed us to walk, so in the case just of my family, we know that costs have certainly reduced because there's no requirement for bus service and we can walk.
Great, thank you. "When is it appropriate to introduce computers? And is there any research to support that it helps to set the foundations for math, reading, and writing that are necessary in the elementary grades? What evidence do we have that computers improve educational outcomes? And how do we know..." And how do we know when we have passed the line of too much computer and online instruction?
Thank you, Mr. Baird. Good evening again. The research behind, should I hold it closer? My apologies. The research behind the technology advancements that we're looking to achieve within Arlington Public Schools, there's a study that we can reference by John Hattie, and this talks about the impact on learning that makes a difference in a classroom as students have more devices that are progressive with regard to their learning. We have an integrated reading and support plan in which the school board has allocated funding for both the technology in the classroom and professional development for the teachers because they go hand in hand. We align these goals with our SMART goals academically that every school and every principal and teacher has, and we also look to focus our efforts on identified student populations, targeted groups, second grade and sixth grade, to see that we can indeed impact the learning gaps that we have within our student populations. There's a lot of research about the appropriate age and the type of device that you would utilize. There are recommendations and opinions on both sides. It is our goal to be cost-effective, to have an implementation plan that is pace. Currently, there is a $200,000 request within the student superintendent-proposed budgets for technology for this year, so we'll be looking to consider that, and we'll be discussing it over the next couple of months as part of our integration and implementation plan to remain technologically advanced. And one of the other things that I quickly want to point out is that this isn't all new equipment. We are repurposing a lot of equipment to make available to families who do not have computer or internet access at home. And so we are not just being green, but we are looking out for all of our students. So thank you.
Thank you. A last question has to do with capacity. As part of the capacity planning, what are the considering, I'm sorry, let me try again. Is CIP planning considering the ramifications of large numbers of low-income elementary school students concentrated in a small number of enlarged schools?
Now Abby touched on briefly the CIP planning process, and I'm not sure exactly what the question's getting at in that one of the things that the school board, sorry, one of the things that the school board, as part of our last CIP planning process in looking at our elementary schools, both our current elementary schools and as we plan for the future, is looking around one consistent size for elementary schools. And that really is sort of a fundamental building block as we look at what we're doing in different parts of the county. Because one of the things, options that we had before us two years ago is, as we looked at sites that could hold additional space, some of those sites, Taylor was one of them, already is one of the largest enrolled schools, elementary schools in Arlington. And the question is, you know, do we want to put an addition on that school that would get it 250 more students and get it up where an elementary school conceivably near 1,000 students? And that was a conversation that we worked through with the community, and the answer was no, that there's an equity issue in terms of making sure that across the county, we have consistently sized schools. So that's one of the things that we're planning towards. And what we came to on that and what our new buildings are being built to and what our additions are building to is about 600-seat elementary capacity. So in terms of where we're looking, and the other aspect of the question, I think, was sort of looking at different parts of the county, and I think different people touched on this, too. One of the important things in Arlington is balancing choice and neighborhood schools. And as we move forward and we identify the areas of critical need as well as the space that's available to us to build or put additions, we'll be balancing those two pieces. And I think as we move forward that we will continue to have both of those options available for elementary school students in Arlington.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your concise answers. We have really the full 20 minutes here for delegates to ask questions. For those of you who are here for the first time and aren't delegates, only delegates are permitted to ask questions from the microphones. Please say your names loudly because we're televised. And if you aren't a delegate yourself, just lean over close to somebody near you and ask them if they'll ask your question. So please come up to the microphone here if you have questions for the school board. Oh, yes, and all questions are, we have 30 seconds for questions. Per question. Alternate delegates can also come up and ask questions.
Hi, Randy Swart from Barcroft. Do I understand correctly from the presentation that you have a healthy $539 million budget and that the gap that you're looking to fill this year is somewhere between $1 and $10 million? If that's correct, I'm wondering why people are bemoaning the diversion of funds away from the school's budget. It seems to me that we're doing pretty well by you.
Well, I can't imagine why people would bemoan spending money on the schools. No, we are in a much better position this year than we have been in previous years and certainly better than the revenue estimates in the fall. The real estate assessments came in much stronger, so we're all happy about that. That is certainly good for Arlington County government and for the schools as well. But as I said, we are always looking to improve, and focusing on teacher quality and compensating our teachers appropriately is very important. So that gap that I talked about of $1 million was with no compensation increase for staff and with nothing new. So it wouldn't expand instructional time, it wouldn't add anything in terms of the focus on reading. And so we also know, though, that we have to find efficiencies and change the way we do business. So that's why the superintendent has a number of recommendations in his budget to do that. And I know that many of those are controversial. As I said, we're already starting to hear from folks. So our process over the next two months is going to be to consider the superintendent's proposed budget, weigh those things very carefully. If there are proposals he has for reductions that the board does not want to do, then we're going to have to find other reductions or not add certain things. Because at the end of the day, unlike the folks across the river, our budget has to balance.
Joe Pelton, Chainbridge Forest, but I also chair the Joint County School IT Commission. And we have been looking at the idea of looking at the elephant in the room, which is capacity for high school students coming down the line. We are looking at the idea of virtual class offerings, class offerings for students who could get college credit, also the idea of maybe internships with high-tech companies and so on, other ways to get education, quality education, at the same time using technology to deal with our capacity problem. To what extent do you think this is a good idea, is a plausible idea?
Sure, I'll take that. Thank you for the question. We think that any new idea is a great idea. We can't really think the way that we always have in the past because we're running out of options with our space. Certainly, we can't build our way out of this, nor, as taxpayers, do you want us to build our way out of this. We have a framework right now that we're working under, sort of to focus our thinking. And part of that is virtual, looking at what does distance learning look like. Now, what we don't want to do, though, is create a virtual environment and have the quality of instruction drop. There have been instances in other places where that's happened. It looks like an easy solution, but when you lose that one-on-one instruction with the real teacher right there in the classroom, that's not something that we necessarily, a place that we want to go towards. I will say that our job as policymakers is to look around the corner, not what's just in front of us, but what's next. And clearly, virtual and the technology piece is what's next. I think that the students who are in our schools now will be hard-pressed to find any environment in which they're working or going to secondary education, post-secondary education, where there's not a technology or a virtual environment.
Good evening. My name is Jan Bauer from Long Branch Creek Civic Association, and I have two questions. The first is, I noticed that Wakefield was ranked, I think, number 63 of the Washington Post Index, whereas the other two schools were ranked at like 10 or 11. I'd like to understand what's happening, that Wakefield School is so much lower ranked than the other two schools. And then the second question is, you said that the low-income needs of the students are increasing. I'd like to understand, given the increasing cost of living in Arlington County, where those low-income folks are coming from and where those needs are coming from.
Thank you for your question. Can you hear me? I always appreciate when folks bring up the ranking of high schools. My daughter graduated from Wakefield High School, and I will tell you that each student's journey in education is unique, and there are many opinions on where high schools should be ranked and what's better. The quality of education in Arlington Public Schools is phenomenal. If you live anywhere in this county, with the amount of tax dollars we pay, you should be able to get a quality education. And so I encourage parents at kindergarten night, take ownership of your child's education. Don't get caught up in rankings. Every child learns differently. My daughter graduated from Wakefield, and in two months she'll be graduating from the College of William and Mary. That was her experience. And if I compare your daughter or my child or Mr. Simon's kids or Ms. Baird's children, that would be unfair to them. I ask parents to stay focused on the quality of education that their children are getting. And if we're not doing our job, hold us responsible. Those rankings are nice, but they don't really mean a lot. The quality of education that's going on in the classroom is what we're concerned about, and we'll let other people judge, but we're held responsible to taxpayers and citizenry here in Arlington, and we want to ensure that we're doing right by those parents and those students. I don't care what the rankings say.
Did anybody else want to add something?
I wanted to point out in those rankings, I think those were only the local ranking, those were only the local rankings, and in recent years, when we've been on a national index that rates thousands of schools, that all of our schools are in the top 100s. So it's kind of relative. You know, all of our schools are phenomenal, they all offer something different. A lot of our students at Wakefield are kids who are coming in, English is a second language. But you talk, you talk to families and parents at every one of our schools, and they love their high schools. They are passionate about them. So I think we do need to be really careful about how we see those rankings and really think about what they represent.
I'm Catherine Scruggs, a delegate from the Alliance for Housing Solutions. But my question tonight is about employee compensation because I worked for 25 years as a teacher in the Arlington Public Schools. During those 25 years, it would not have been considered as an option to have a step increase in the first 10 years of a teacher's career, or that there would be a salary adjustment. Something happened five years ago, and you seem to have taken that off the table, even while you keep the strategic goal about staff so important that they be appreciated. Well, they're not appreciated when you add $10 million in other options, but not the $8 million for the step increase. I want to know why.
I think I also was part of the school system, and I retired in 2007, and I think some years we've really had, we did have the COLA plan, the step increase. Right now, looking at the increase of enrollment, increased numbers, for example, the 2% cost of living adjustment is $7 million. We also now have challenges regarding the Virginia retirement system, which right now is $7.5 million, and the health insurance, which is $2,600,000. And what we are finding as a school board, a challenge, as Mrs. Raphael indicated, that we were, you know, we had a gap of $1 million, but we are committed to, at least, to give this year the 2% COLA increase. I do understand that last year we gave the step increase, the year before we gave a COLA increase, in 2011 we gave a step increase. So it seems that it is not both steps and COLA. But I do recognize the cost of living here, and I do recognize the need of, you know, compensation, increasing compensations of teachers.
Good evening, school board. My name is Jane Foster. I'm the president of the Arlington Education Association, the premier labor union here in Arlington, and an Arlington school teacher. My question is, I keep hearing you say that you are all about Arlingtonians having choice, but in this budget, proposed budget, we're eliminating choice by eliminating programs such as Langston and Arlington Mill. Langston program will no longer be able to have their students have their diploma from their neighborhood schools or their home schools. Can you explain some of the thinking behind eliminating or minimizing those program cuts, please?
So again, this is the superintendent's proposed budget, and it's just come to the school board, so we are going to be going through a process of evaluating that. But just in, and tomorrow evening, we're having a work session where we are going to be considering the most significant efficiencies and reductions in the superintendent's budget. That will be our first opportunity to discuss it. But just based on what is in the budget book, which is online and is good reading, if any of you would like, the, as I understand, the superintendent's proposal would take the Langston High School continuation program, which has about 63 students, and move that, those students to the Arlington Mill High School, which is located at the Career Center, and then combine those two groups of high school-age students together, which would create a program of a little over, more than 200 students. It would then take the students who are 22 years of age and older who are at Arlington Mill High School and move them into our adult education program. So what the merits of that are is something, as I said, that we will start to discuss. I know school board members have a lot of questions about it, community members have a lot of questions, but that is the overview, taking students who are older and having them educated with older students, adult students, still with an opportunity for a diploma, combining two programs for more high school-age students. And at the Career Center, as we saw when we moved the teen parenting program last year, which was a very controversial move, it gave students a lot more opportunities for career and technical education and many other courses that are offered at the Career Center. And by the way, those students, we had a presentation this fall, are being very successful and very happy with the opportunities they now have at the Career Center. So lots of opportunity to discuss that proposal.
These will be the last three questions.
Good evening. My name is Alan Gadgetar. I'm representing the Maywood Civic Association. I have a question. So what is Arlington Public Schools doing to address dyslexia, which impacts some 20% of our children? And if you could, please put that in the context of additional, whatever else is being done for special needs students beyond dyslexic students as well?
That's my question. I've got one of those at home. So believe me, I understand. And I think Ms. Raphael referred, the school board received the evaluation with services being delivered for students with special needs last year. And one of the prime findings of that was inconsistent supports being delivered to students, and particularly in reading. And one of the things, and it's reflected in the superintendent's budget, it's also reflected in the school board's priority, is a focus on reading. And we really need to know that every student is reading by third grade, and that's not happening now. And they're really, you know, we have a lot of students who are fine, they come in, they get what they need, and they're well on their way. There's kids who are struggling, and if we don't get the right interventions to them in the beginning, they're going to struggle throughout their careers. Now, one of the things that was mentioned was the Arlington-tiered system of supports, ATSS. And one of the things about that that I personally find intriguing is the present system, and it is special education all over the country. You wait for kids to fail, and then you come in and you have this sort of boilerplate interventions that you sort of have to go through, and then, and usually, it's well down the road before you really have your finger on what is the problem and actually hopefully have identified a consistent set of services to be delivered to that child. One of the things that ATSS would do is intervene before a child fails, that you, that some of those services that only get delivered now if you get a child into an IEP situation where a special education team decides those are the appropriate services, some of those we would deliver before a child had ever even been identified for special services. So I think there's a lot of work to do, there's a lot of investment, I think there's a lot of focus that needs to happen at the earliest level. I think there's a lot of focus that needs to happen at the earliest levels, and I think that that's something that you're, that the school system is concentrating on, and I think you will see continued focus. Thank you for the question.
Good evening. I'm Dave Gelman. I'm from the Yorktown Civic Association. I come before you tonight as a proud graduate of the Arlington County Schools, from Taylor Elementary, Stratford Junior High, and Washington Lee High School. My question, obviously, is about the middle one of those, and middle is the key word. Will the county, will the school board be seriously considering returning Stratford to a middle school, given, one, not only the size of its facility, but also the relative gap in the county's map as to conventional middle school locations?
That would be a key question. We have not yet received any specific proposals in terms of this year's CIP, but certainly, looking at middle school, I mean, we are expecting that the middle school timeframe is what, where the most critical need is going to be. You have identified, yes, that is a part of the county where there is critical need, although it does exist everywhere. There have been some suggestions that we might look at HB Woodlawn, which currently is in the Stratford building, as is the Stratford program, and evaluate how we might better use that space. Obviously, with anything in Arlington, that involves a lot of public dialogue. You know, certainly, HB Woodlawn, the Stratford building sits on a very big piece of property. As a school system, we don't own many of those. If it could be that as we move down the conversations, that is one that we end up having, I know there's also, though, the possibility of other options in terms of space and how things align in terms of priorities. So, that would be a qualified maybe.
Last one.
Wayne Kubicki from ACTA. Michael, again, thank you for running this program. I know how hard these things are. I'd like to follow up on Catherine's question, but come at it from the other direction. With your current compensation package, are you having any trouble retaining or attracting the quality of teachers you want?
Arlington is an amazing school district, and we do attract many candidates. You know, we have a job fair in March, and we have hundreds of candidates coming, and they would like to work in Arlington. The retention, I think that we do retain our teachers. Are there concerns, just speaking from the teacher's perspective, regarding the cost of living in Arlington, and what would happen if they would have, they live in other counties? And so, they do explore job opportunities, but we don't have right now any data that would indicate that. But I know that for a fact that Arlington is becoming very expensive to live, but I...
If I can just add, too, I mentioned during the presentation, the goal to have more, that we have many teachers who have dual endorsements, but we have a real focus on having more of those, because, as I mentioned, we have so many students who are special-needs students, who are ESOL Hilt, and to have the program evaluations that we've had over the last several years have really indicated a need to have more teachers who, for example, have special education credentials and English Language Arts, or ESOL Hilt and Math. Those teachers are much harder to come by. We have many of them, but we want more. And so, really making sure that we have not only great compensation and benefits, but also small class size, which attracts teachers because they want to work in that kind of an environment, is very important.
Thank you very much for coming. I'd like to remind everybody here, those of you who are residents or citizens here in Arlington, that the board has office hours when school's in session from 5:00 until 7:00 p.m. on Mondays, and please stop by and talk to them. They welcome your knowledge and feedback. Can we give them a round of applause and thank them?